So. Mary said she might call in Zoom in. I have not heard from, have you talked to Tom Guard recently?
I did.
Okay, because I called him yesterday and left a message. But I haven't heard back from him. And then Karen from Semcres is gonna zoom in.
So do we want to wait a few minutes or do we want to start the meeting?
Well, we don't have a quorum, so. Probably can't start yet.
And Stu?
Yeah, I talked to Stu Friday, so. He didn't say anything about not coming. See if anybody emailed. Okay, Mary just. Hey, Mary, how are you?
Good.
So now we have three people.
Okay.
So we can go ahead and. Yeah, if you want to go ahead and call me, it's order.
Order is eight oh six. And first on the agenda approval of the regular minutes. So we need a motion to approve the minutes.
Do we have to do a real call on that soon?
We'll just do it, I'll just write it or just put in the minutes that way. Can you hear Mary okay or?
I can, everything's perfect.
Okay.
I'll make the motion now.
Okay, so Doug made the motion. Alright. Mary, do you want a second? There's a motion to approve the minutes.
Yes, I will second.
Okay.
Mark, you wanted a motion then on the quarterly finance report as well?
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's one motion for financial and statutory.
So we'll need a motion then again for the quarterly finance report.
I'm gonna make that.
I'm gonna turn the mic side, just give me one second.
Sorry, Mary, you probably can't hear.
I can hear, I can hear, okay.
Okay, so then we just made a motion, Mary, for the quarterly finance report. Two of you right now for approving.
A motion, a motion to accept it?
Yes, please.
Okay, I will make a motion to accept the quarterly finance report.
One second.
Public hearings, none, and then reports?
So the lease agreement for Napa and Traxler still. There's no new. Information there, rent is current. And beside improvement. I've got several of these things out, but nothing's come back in in the last few months. Six forty-eight Second Street, Lenhart. Was gonna replace the canopy in front of their building, I haven't talked to them recently about that.
That's the one that's ripped?
Yeah, I think so, and then the Kenyon leader is the same thing. And they got a. Application back in March or April or something, and I think it was March. They were all excited about trying to fix that, trying to build it up and. I haven't heard back, and then I'd also given one to Rivera at the. Kenyon Bar and Grill, but I haven't gotten anything back on that thing either, so. Anyway, so that's it for that. So you have unfinished business, first thing is the update on the. Business Park Utility Extension, Derek, I don't know if you want to come up. Click up here to try, just so Mary can hear you.
Sure.
You want to sit here?
Well, I could just, here, I'll just.
I can hear him. I can hear, okay.
Okay, I'll just come sit right in the middle here and speak up. So just kind of a. A quick update with everything here today and where we've been since the last meeting. So in June, at the city council meeting, we brought bids. To the city council for approval. There's a lot of interest in the project and they have said that the bid numbers actually came in quite favorable. They're above three hundred thousand under what our estimated cost was, so. That project was awarded to A1 Construction out of Boomer, Wisconsin. For about one point three seven million. As the construction cost. So basically, what we've been doing over the past couple of months is just trying to finalize some of the easements that we need for the Northern Utility Extension. So there's an easement through Festival Farms property, through the Traxler property, and also through a property that's owned by Goodies County. And we're just in the process of finishing those up right now. We've gotten signatures from everyone, we basically just need to. Record those easements and then we're good to go. So one other thing that's in process right now is final contracts for that project. Those are in with A1 Construction, we're just waiting on signed versions of the contract and then we'll be ready to start work. I checked in with the contractor, it sounds like they're planning to start in late August or early September. So realistically, by the next city council meeting, hopefully we know a little bit more about the details of. How they plan to complete the project, so just as a reminder. What they're going to be doing this year for that project is they're going to be working on. All the underground utility work. And then the preliminary grading as well. And they'll be working out on site up until the end of November. Up until freeze up. And then the actual roadway construction and the final grading, that will happen early next year, during the spring of twenty twenty one.
So I have a question, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So, okay, so now, since we kind of got this really good bid and maybe, you know, there's money, would there ever be? I mean, are we just going to keep going straightforward with our plan that, you know, was solid and we're done, or can we? You know, maybe add some of those little extras that we wanted before, but couldn't do because of money?
So that's a good point, I should have pointed that out, so when we bid the project, what we did was we. We pulled the turn lane. Out of the project as an alternate and.
Yes.
The, and there's a little segment of storm sewer, so even. We got bids on those numbers and even with adding those in, we still saved three hundred thousand.
So they came. Are we gonna have those?
Yes, so those were awarded as part of the project, so.
Cool, okay.
Yeah, came in with really good pricing as, I guess if there's one thing that comes out of this whole COVID scenario, it's a good thing for that project, so.
Oh, that's wonderful news, good.
If you plan that any better, that's.
And then we sold. The debt, you know, the bonds that we sold were based on the bid costs, so. You know, our budget now is what was based on the contractor's bid. So we don't, you know, as far as. I mean, that's kind of the amount of money we have, we have some contingency in there, a small amount, but we basically sold. Debt, bonds, based on the contract cost, so instead of saying we needed, you know, one point. Say we needed two point three million, these are just examples, now, you know, we would have sold debt for that. Because it's three hundred less, now I would say it's two million, so we sold that based on two million, so that's what we have to work with now for money, basically.
Okay.
Oversimplify it, but. So.
You couldn't, nobody here about a groundbreaking for the Business Park?
Yeah, Tom Guard had actually brought this up to me, but I mean, it is something that I think we would have gotten to, but. It's, we need to set a date to try to have a groundbreaking kind of before they maybe start construction. You know, get some publicity in the newspapers, maybe the Fairbowl paper. I don't know about Rochester, they would pick it up, but yeah, and I talked to the newspaper reporter about it, so she said they would cover it. And she thought they could put it in the Fairbowl newspaper or surrounding ones.
So if we get a little bit closer to sometime in August, you're thinking you want you.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking. Oh, what did I, can I put here, first or second week of August, yeah.
Well, that's gonna be your reporting, right?
It's gonna be like next week, so that's why I was gonna see what everybody's schedule was today, but since we only have three people, maybe I'll just do it by email. And just try to throw some dates out there and see.
Derek, are they gonna have some equipment out there at that time?
Probably, probably not, that's what I'm saying, you know, we need a.
We need piece of equipment there, you know, instead of just everybody standing out in a.
Field.
In the field, it's already got, everything sprayed and dead, so.
We could do that, wait until.
We could wait till after they kind of get started.
Yeah, I mean, realistically, what they're gonna be working on first is. It might not look like there's a lot going on out there because they're working way on the north end for the utility extension, so it could be just a matter of bringing an excavator over or something like that. Hooking that, it's going on, that would be much easier, I mean, you could realistically do it anytime during September then.
Okay.
Well, maybe, and maybe I know we're not really doing Rose Fest, but I know there's like some events going on, you know? It might be something cool to do during that time, because, you know, people will be around and. There'll be garage sales, and I know we're not doing everything for Rose Fest, but people are doing, you know, some little things. Might be an option.
Okay, alright, well, Derek, maybe you can kind of look into that.
Sure.
Same with all the other.
I'll figure out when he's gonna get on site.
Let's see if we can get something set up with a piece of equipment.
Sure.
Okay, I mean, it'd be good, maybe, that sign might be too big to get into a picture, but. Maybe we can show the science stuff or something, but.
Sure, yeah, otherwise, if we gotta make a new banner or something like that, we can do that, and we've also got those. A bunch of trouble for the news, I think. I think they're painting gold handles.
Yeah, if you, you can maybe dig up a couple of those, that'd be good, yeah.
Sorry, move on to updating on the small city development.
Okay, so Karen. Yep, there you go, you're unmuted, so let me see if I can get you on here. There we go, alright Karen, we got you up now.
Good morning, thank you for having me, so we're coming to the near completion of our 2017 Small Cities Development Program grant. For the city of Kenyon, and when I was at the. EDA meeting earlier this year, we had talked about the possibility of. Having some excess funds in commercial and a little bit in housing to be transferred to the Roseview Apartments Rehab. And after that meeting, after some of the input that was received, we did some additional marketing and gave. Commercial property owners kind of a last chance to take advantage of these funds, and we did two additional projects, but however, we still have. Around forty-five thousand or just under forty-five thousand from the commercial rehab and. About forty-five hundred in the housing to be transferred, and if we don't use those funds in Kenyon, they will go back to the state, so. Roseview Apartments does have some additional needs in terms of siding replacement that is needed and some electrical improvements. That we didn't initially have enough funds for, so there are, there are, there are some needs for those funds, so. The council approved this at their July meeting to transfer those funds, and so that was just kind of part of the update. And then the other part of the update was on the program usage. I did a map of where we completed projects and I numbered them according to the. Chart on pages two and three of that, it just kind of talks about the address of the property that was rehabbed, the work completed and the total dollars invested, so it's not just the small cities money. It's all funds invested in those properties, so. All the housing projects have been completed. Two commercial projects are in the process of being completed, and then obviously with the Roseview Apartments, that would be the last part of that project. So the, the program usage update is there for your information, if someone has questions.
So I don't know if there's any questions on any of this, anything?
No, I think it's, it's a good deal.
Yeah, it's worked really well, so I gotta say. It's good seeing this breakdown, especially of the commercial.
Is it just gonna go on again in the future, another program?
We have to reapply again, but, you know, it's a competitive program, so. You know. Karen, we've had questions about, people have asked if the city would. Do this kind of program again, and I've told them that. You know, logistics of it are that it's a competitive grant program, and so I would assume it would be a number of years before we would. Realistically look at reapplying again, but I don't know if you have any.
Yeah, so we're on average for eight to ten, every eight to ten years, we come around to a city, so that was. I think the last time previous to this grant, Kenyon was involved in a grant was in the. Two thousand eleven. Two thousand nine, Good Hugh County Housing Rehab Program, and then there was a Good Hugh County. Program in two thousand seven that included commercial, the two thousand nine did not, the other thing is. With the commercial, some of the commercial funds were designated for repayment, so the grant up fronted those loan funds and they're being repaid and those are. Being managed by Semcres, but they're kept just for Kenyon, they're, we track them by grant, so we do, if we have some people that contact us. We could revolve those funds back out and would revolve those funds back out when we have adequate funds to do a project. The other component to this is if someone sells their house and their owner occupied within the ten-year timeframe, they do have a repayment requirement, and again, those funds. All come back to Kenyon and they're kept and tracked for Kenyon, so. Semcres manages those for the city and does all the reporting on those, so we track our loans, so if. We do an annual mailing to the loan participants and to make sure that they're still the owner and it's their primary residence, and sometimes we catch people that. May not, may still own a home, but they don't use it as their primary residence, so their mail is getting forward, so that's a way to catch them. But, and make sure that they do the repayment so that it's equitable for everyone, and those, like I said, those funds would be revolved and used back in Kenyon.
Okay, well, that's good, so there may be some money that's available when some of these loan, partial parts of these loans are paid back. So that's good. Because I've had some businesses ask me, you know, if there's money available recently. So at least tell them there may be, it might be a year or two or whatever, but.
Let's keep it active, you know, follow up on it.
Yep.
We also maintain an active waiting list for people that. Were homeowners and commercial property owners that we get inquiries from, so we have some people that have been on the waiting list for. Six, seven years, and then we're finally able to help them, so that's also a possibility too, that we. As we look at that waiting list and determine when we apply for funding as well. And then the state recently, the guideline, so that we would no longer have to have a target area if the city had a population under five thousand, so that was something we advocated for, so that we could do. Citywide grants versus having a target area, we're able to help more people that way.
Okay. Excellent. And there will be a public hearing, Karen, in August.
That's correct, August, August twelfth was the city council meeting, correct, Mark?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's kind of a, just a closeout, that's a postkeep kind of thing that we have to do. So there's really no action or anything specific there that occurs, so.
Thank you, Karen.
Yeah, thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you, and then Mark, if you, I sent over the form to transfer those funds, if you could get that back to me in the next week or so, then I can get that up to the state.
Okay.
And if you need me to resend it, I can do that too.
Alright, I'll check and see if I have it.
Okay.
Alright. Alright.
For some equipment expansion?
No, no information. So you have a copy of the, of the summary. Of the Good Hugh County study, and I believe the final study has not been, the final, final study hasn't actually been distributed yet, but this. Executive summary pretty much has the main information in it, and it's got the breakdown of. Project numbers that the markets can support by region. So, for instance, I highlighted page ten, that shows. By region, the general occupancy. Demand or the number of units, they think that can be supported between twenty and twenty twenty and twenty thirty. So for, we're considered, Kenny Wannamango are. Grouped into what's called Southwest, the county has broken up into six regions in this. Six markets, submarkets in this study, so we're considered Southwest market, so between Kenny Wannamango, they project. Ninety-five, the need for ninety-five single-family, thirty-two multifamily or apartments. There, I'm sorry, those are townhouses, forty-six market rate rental. Thirteen subsidized rental and twenty-five. Deep subsidy rental, which are like HUD. Projects, total of two hundred and eleven units, and then they have a separate column that shows senior demand. Which is broken down, basically it shows a hundred and seventy total between active, persisted living, memory care, et cetera. And it's also broken down, it shows that those hundred and seventy. Seventy-seven of those would be subsidized of some type, so this gives us a good idea. If a developer comes in. And wants to do a rental project or they want to do a, you know, single family, now we have some data which should be good now for a while, so. That's the main reason that I wanted to participate in this study. The study's got a ton of information in it, as far as existing conditions, need, you know, things like that, so it's, it is interesting to read it. But it's about a hundred pages too, so it's quite a bit thick. And then it talks about. The specific rental rates, housing prices, you know, things like that, it breaks down the need. In the Southwest market for, for example, for single-family, twenty percent is up to a hundred and fifty thousand, sixty-five percent. Is between one seventy-five and three hundred and fifteen. And this is actually the county I'm looking at here, is three fifty, so then it shows, if you go to the right, the number of actual units that. Between Kenny and Wannamango, they think the market could support, and then the totals for both single-family and rental. And they do say in here that projected demand will exceed lots of play in Kenyon. So among other cities, Red Wing, Cannon Falls, Good Hugh, Pine Island, so it does say that. There will be a need for more lots, more development, which is, you know, good to know, so if we have somebody coming in, again, we have. Kind of this to show, and they could show. And they could show their lenders or whoever they deal with, the investors that, you know, they're according to this study, there is a need. And Maxfield that did this study does more studies than anybody in the Midwest, at least in Minnesota, for sure, than I think the Midwest. So they're a well-respected company. And then page twelve talks about the rental rates that the market could support. And for market rate, it talks about eight fifty to a thousand, ten to fourteen units. And townhouses, eleven fifty to fourteen hundred. Um, so again, and it shows number of units, um, but it's, it's good, really good. This is kind of the core of the information. A lot of the other stuff is more research kind of based, but it is good, especially for us practitioner, you know, city staff people. And the county people that have this information, but for us to, to know what went into it. Um, and then on page thirteen, they talk about senior, which is, again, they break it down by market rate. Subsidy, you know, memory care, catered living, which is basically rental with services. And so we can kind of see there, again, the number of units range from fourteen sixteen. Do the senior housing with services being twenty to thirty. So there always seems to be a big need for that. And it's, the elderly population is still growing, so that's, um, that kind of reflects that. So then the appendix has more specific information, I won't go through that. Um, but the market, the study, you know, for quite a while to get completed. But it, um, shows, I think, what we see in general market trends. The things that we read regionally and statewide as far as need. You know, the most need in the low to moderate income area is still kind of the case in senior housing. So this is, just kind of reinforces kind of what we already suspected, so anyway. But it's good if the EDA, you know, if we get involved with any kind of housing projects. We've had some interest in rental, talked to a couple of developers in the last few years, but nobody's really, nothing's really gained traction. But it may be something that we want to look at a little closer is trying to work with. An organization like SEMCRA or somebody else to maybe look at. Because we definitely could use, you know, a small development anyway, especially a family rental or townhouses. Something there's no choice about it, so.
Yeah, people are always asking, they're always asking, there's always people looking.
Yeah, so this may be something that we, we want to sink our teeth into a little more here in the next year or two. So, um, yeah, so that's what I have, I don't know if there's any questions on that.
And then hopefully we have a place for them all to work at the industrial park, right?
Yeah. There you go. Keep them in town, man. New business, Dollar General, um, this is kind of just an update, but Dollar General. Um, development companies, and I tried to break down in my memo, um, kind of how they work. Dollar General will, all the stores that they occupy are leased. And so development companies, real estate investment companies, put these buildings up. And then they lease them to Dollar General, depreciate them, use them, you know, as an investment vehicle. And so the actual people that we have contact with are developer, development company. Now, the latest one that has come, is in here now is a company from Alexandria, Louisiana. And the guy that I'm dealing with, it's called Ret Cliff, the company is Ret Cliff Development. So the guy I'm dealing with now, my belief is kind of a higher level person with this company. Cause before, generally we have these guy, these people come in that are kind of just looking around at different sites. Where this guy seems to be more of a, like, okay, this is kind of the guy they send in now and they think they have something. Now, the site that they're looking at, not to be specific, because it's very early right now. Normally this kind of thing doesn't come through like the, on EDA or city council until it's further along. But what happened is there's a site that they're interested in on Highway fifty-six south, kind of near where the fire hall. Full craft that's across the road from there. Um, and the owner of that site, and I do think that he's got a lot of foresight here. He wants, wanted us to check with the city council to see if it's something they would support, because the site would have to be rezoned. So right now, you know, we have to remember, this is still very preliminary and the, the owner has been contacted, but that's it. And I think he's interested in selling, but he is still, you know, I mean, they still haven't gotten to probably final numbers. A lot of things, as I've seen with this and a lot of these processes can change pretty quickly. But he is interested, so what I'm doing is just kind of running this up the flagpole with the council to see if it's something they support. And not being specific to the council members, but, you know, it's kind of been mixed. And, you know, Doug, I know is supportive of it, I can clearly, you know, say that. A couple of them are sort of, one of them I think is not supportive of it, another one is kind of not sure. And the other two I haven't talked to, so haven't, they haven't gotten back to me, so. It's, it's the, the one person who I know is strongly against it. It's the impact on the downtown, the impact on the grocery store, the impact on the hardware store. And it's kind of the whole thing that we would hear with Walmart. Like when Walmart comes through a city, another city that I worked for had a Walmart expand, they already had a Walmart. But it's the same, it's the same thing again, that, you know, it's gonna hurt our downtown, it's gonna put small retailers out of business, et cetera. It's, you know, Kenyon, I mean, th- there's really no, it's a, there's a lot of unknowns. I mean, I will say that because we're a small market, you know, we've seen where they've gone in around us, like Pine Island. Um, Byron just opened, Byron's not probably as good example, because Byron's six thousand people. Um, Hayfield might be another comparable, the thing with Hayfield is they didn't have much to begin with. And I see this a lot when I've traveled around the country, um, when we've driven through like the south. Um, Tennessee, Mississippi, I've seen what these Dollar General stores just like in literally like, also middle of nowhere. There's nothing around them, or they're in these real small villages, towns that are like a thousand people. And they didn't have anything to begin with, so.
That's how I feel, kind of is, Hayfield is kind of like on the other side of the road, isn't it? It's like.
Yep, it is.
Yeah, it's kind of weird.
It's near that, it's across from that Casey's, A and W kind of thing. And, but I haven't looked at their downtown, but I don't, I can't believe they have much, like, I can't believe they have a grocery store.
Yeah, I don't think so, I know they have like a bowling alley, you know, cause I go over there a lot for funerals, but there's not a lot. I mean, I don't think they have a grocery store, you know, but they have that Casey's, that Casey's is always crazy.
Lee Center up on, on Highway ninety-nine has a Casey's. And also they just got a Dollar General here within the last year or so. And, um, I believe their population is around the same size as what we are, I'm not certain.
Yeah, it's pretty full.
I also talked to Sarah from DNS Banners yesterday. And, uh, she made a reply back and also feels somewhat the same way that I do. Is we have to look at the future of Kenyon and also what Dollar General does. Like Mark says, they're out in the country here and there. Uh, we have two little towns that probably would snap it up in a hurry. And that is Wanamango and also West Concord. Now, we have those people coming here to buy groceries. So that is something that we have to think about, is get our head out of the sand and think of the future. Now, I do know some things with Walmart, being there thirteen years. That yes, it does pull away from businesses, but at the same time, they also attract. Now Walmart, I guarantee is not coming to Kenyon. But with a, a Dollar General or even a Casey's or something like that, yes, it's gonna pull away. But it also attracts other people here. And when we're looking at it, we are looking at housing, we're looking at an industrial park. We're looking at a whole bunch of other things. And that, uh, we have to look at the future. And we also have to look at, yes, it's gonna hurt a little bit of the businesses to an extent. But it builds up over a period of time, that it will, the more attraction that we have for people to come to Kenyon. The better off all of us will be, and that includes the businesses, the bank, um, hardware store, everybody. So I think it's really something seriously that we should look at and pursue, follow it out and see when it's where it goes.
And so the specific, you know, next steps that could happen in this process of it proceeds. Is that, um, if there is a, you know, if the seller decides to go ahead with this. Then the development company will get an option on this site, then they would have to go back. And that's specific to this site, and they'd have to apply to have it rezoned. And this is where the council, excuse me, where their decision comes into play here. Is that the site has to be, would have to be rezoned from industrial to highway commercial. And as such, this is where the council has a decision in this. Um, basically, if they come in and there's a site that's properly zoned, like if they were gonna go out on Highway sixty, like where Traxler land is, for an example. Let's just say, that's already zoned, um, there, the council wouldn't even be involved with this kind of approval. They could just come in if they meet the zoning and that'd be the end of it. So what makes this a little more involved is that the council and the planning commission has to make recommendations. The council has to, you know, review this and look at the rezoning. So that's why the council's involved in this. And so, you know, I, I don't know the other two council people. I know one of them said he's kind of mixed on this, and if it is rezoning, he may approve, he might, he might go along with rezoning it. But he's a little concerned about the effect on the town. The other council member's not gonna support it, I don't think, no matter what. So the other two are kind of the linchpin. But I do think that there might be momentum, that there might be an impulse for this to go through at this point. But again, not talking to the other two, I can't say with a hundred percent certainty, but.
Another thing that, another thing that was brought up too, and, uh, you know, some of the comments that were made. Uh, was, uh, well, it's gonna take away from full-time employees. Well, following through, which I have read some of the things from Dollar General itself, that packet that I have, but, well. Or there will be full-time people here, which has to create a little bit more for housing again. Part timers, yes, there's gonna be some part timer, no doubt about it, but we have part timers at our store. Another thing that was brought up was the fact of, well, the money leaves town, okay? Uh, we have a grocery store here, and I believe there's five, if I'm correct, that they own right now. Does the money stay here in town, it may go to the bank, but it still leaves town. But we need to have, even if it's part timers, the money will stay more than likely here and be spent here. Those are the things that we have to look at to the future, instead of it's just gonna kill it off, it does not kill it off.
Yeah, and I, if I, I mean, I've never only been to a Dollar General like twice or something in my life, but it's not really cheap in there, right? I mean, it's kind of expensive, I'm like, I think it's cheaper to go to Fred's or, I mean, I, whatever, it's not Fred's anymore. But, you know, I think it's sometimes like people will be like, well, it's expensive to shop at downtown, you know, at the county market. I'm like, well, it's not really, it's not any more expensive than going to Cub Foods or something, really. You know, so people might compare shop and, you know, do that, and they go there maybe for specific things and, you know.
These dollar stores, when you go to them, they don't seem that busy, or when you look outside of them. Like in Pine Island, you look from, like Derek, you can probably tell this, the dollar store, I mean, I've been, been in there a few times. I, I don't go there much, but the grocery store, you know, seems like Kenyon Mark or, um, Pilot Market. It seems like it's busier, has more cars in front of it, more consistently than Dollar General does. And I don't know if Dollar General brings in people more that shop there versus the locals. But there will be kind of this rallying thing too, where people say, well, we gotta keep our stores. And so maybe that will force more, more people to think about it and go into, you know, the hardware store or the grocery store. And that's exactly what we want.
Yeah.
If this is what it takes, but there is definitely gonna be a, a, uh, element of, or a certain amount of the. Population that's going to, um, you know, be kind of against this and scared of it, there's no doubt about it.
That's what everything though.
Yeah, I mean, I go to, we go, who doesn't want to go to Casey's, you know, and get a pizza? You know, we travel all the way there to get stuff, I mean, I do, because, not that I don't love here, but once in a while, you wanna, you know, change it up.
But Casey's would be another thing too, at some point, I think is gonna come in here, they've looked here in the past.
Casey's are good, yeah, Tom Nygaard, Tom Nygaard was hoping to sell his corner to the Casey's.
Well, Dollar General, you know, they've looked high and low, and the problem is in town, and it's the same for Casey's. Is the cost is, is too much, because to get an acre, you know, that's got houses on it. You're, you're talking at least three to four hundred thousand dollars. And Dollar General, they're, I think their amount that they look at for a site like in a market like ours is, is. South of two hundred, one seventy-five, I didn't know this, but. Now, I don't know what they're gonna offer the guy, or would offer this potential site here. But that site doesn't have much on it, so it's a lot easier to build on. But when you go or develop, when you go into a town, and you got buildings and houses, boy, that gets to be tough, it really does. It gets expensive and time consuming. So sure, and on one hand, there's some places in town, I think that would be good, that would be redevelopment wise. Absolutely, but it's just, it comes down, it comes down to a dollar. Traffic counts, yeah. And the thing is, every place they've gone, um, or a site they've brought to, you know, they had an option on. A site that was owned by Mulgrin and I think Jacobson, just where Second Street kind of beers off for fifty-six. And Dollar General rejected that site, and I think they've brought others to them. And I've talked to the Dollar General, um, you know, the development rep who's in Milwaukee that covers the upper Midwest. And I gave him information on a couple of sites a couple of years ago. And one of them was up where Traxler ha- have that land now. So I, I know they're, they're tough, he told me that, he said they're very tough when they look at a site. It's not just traffic count, it's not just visibility. And I think part of it depends on how many stores they have in a given area too, you know, where they might say, well, we'll. We'll, we'll stretch our parameters on this site, because we don't have a site, a store for thirty miles or something. We're not really in that, because there are some stores, it's not real close to us. But, um, like Zambroda is another place too, I, I'm surprised they haven't looked, maybe they have looked at that. But that would be far enough from here that they probably would still look at this. But that's part of the thing is, I think there is an opportunity here, you know, right now, because there aren't a lot of stores near us. And there even could be traffic from a place like Faribault that comes over here, you know? So I don't know, I think there's potential, but, uh, we'll have to see what the other, what, how the council falls on this. So anyway.
You also have to look at it this way, look at Northfield, they've rejected numerous businesses. And where did they go, right next door to Douglas and that, so I mean, they're shooting themselves in the foot. And I will tell you this much about, uh, Wally World. In the metro areas of, uh, we're using Los Angeles, for instance, they try to put one in at five miles. Each store that they start new, the one that's within a five mile area there loses thirty percent of their business for a while. And it keeps filling up on it. Uh, Minneapolis, St. Paul area, there's. Uh Minneapolis, St. Paul area, they're spreading them out, they're usually ten to fifteen. Now, if you look around here, you'll see Faribault, you'll see Owatonna, Albert Lee, all of those there, the twenty to thirty miles out that they're doing. And that, and that's where it's sitting, but they're not really pushing the issue anymore that I'm aware of on that. But this is the thing that we're looking at, and this is why I'm using uh Dollar General in particular. This is a target spot, I can tell you this much, this is in common sense. If we don't, they're gonna move next door, the next town, they will, without a doubt.
Okay, so this is just information right now, so just wanted to keep the EDA in the loop since this is a economic development project, I guess you could say, so.
Do you think there's any other comments to return the meeting and make a, make a motion?
I make the motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
Next meeting is actually the twenty-seventh of October.
Okay.
Twenty-seventh?
Next regular meeting if something else goes up, obviously, well, I don't know if there will be. Yeah, so I'll kind of look at that, look at Derek. Seems like everything always lands back in Derek's lap again. But yeah, no, this is a, I mean, it's a good thing for holding them back too, to contract her. So we have to get them, you know, coordinated in this too, so.
Sure. Yeah.
So it's the twenty-seventh.
Yes. Twenty-seventh. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, guys, have a great day.
Yeah, you too.
Bye-bye.
Bye.